Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our last public business meeting?
Submissed.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All righty. I have number one. We're honored to have our Allegheny County Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Pressman.
All right. Well, good evening. It is my pleasure to be here this evening among individuals who exemplify leadership and move Allegheny County forward. I am incredibly proud to represent the excellent educators of the Allegheny County Public School System. At this time, I'd like to take just a moment to reflect a little bit on education as a practice. Teachers make up the backbone of our community. We help mold the minds, attitudes, and actions of every child we encounter, and this is no small task. You see, teachers don't dream of giving more assessments or attending more meetings. We aren't in the business of policies, procedures, or pressure. We are in the business of people. And some of those people happen to be little, but they have big ideas. Many of them will pursue careers that don't even exist yet. Teachers feel successful when we see others chasing their dreams and tackling feats that we never thought possible. I'd like to tell you about a little guy I taught about a decade ago. He's stuck in my mind. And by little, I mean he was only about three feet tall, pretty short for his age anyways. And one day, his mom packed him a Fruit by the Foot in his lunchbox, and he unrolled it as far as he could. If you're not familiar, it's a piece of like a fruit roll-up, but it's about two feet long. He unrolled it as far as he could until he reached the limit of his little wingspan, and he just couldn't get it any further. He was stuck, and he didn't know what to do. And he was really disappointed that about six inches of his Fruit by the Foot was still rolled up. So he problem-solved the best way he knew how. He stuck his foot out into the center and pushed out the rest of his neck. He was so persistent and so proud, I didn't even have the heart to tell him he couldn't eat it. What I learned from that day was that persistence and ingenuity have some very sweet rewards. So tonight, I'd like to issue a challenge to everyone here. That challenge is to find a young person and learn something from them. Let that young person teach you something. Learn a big lesson from somebody smaller than yourself, and then you will understand the pride that comes from being an educator. Thank you.
Did you bring some folks with you?
Yeah, I brought my husband and my stepson Daniel and my daughter Gracie.
Great. All right. Well, come on up.
Are we in the middle?
Yeah.
Down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, absolutely.
Why don't you bring down to everybody?
I'll give the back too.
That's right. This is a short one. Change hereby known to all of the Board of County Commissioners, highly commends Annual Judge Pressman, Allegheny County Teacher of the Year, 16/17.
Thank you.
To that sign, Bill Valentine, Cree Brody.
Thank you.
Let us step on this.
We need one with all the commissioners.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's right.
Oh, oh, oh.
My goodness, there's more. They don't usually give gifts.
One of you. Thank you very much.
You know, before we go any further, Ms. Pressman, I will have to tell you that this is all, I was hoping you was talking about me since school 10 years ago. Math kind of did matter. But you know, you are exactly right. When I think back, I can remember pretty much every teacher I had, and the most influential teachers I most certainly had. I can't even tell you where any of my classes was in any of the buildings, other than where the buildings were, but I still can, to this day, remember. I have to give a big shout out to she's passed since, Mrs. Kelly that taught at Bell. It made a very, very big impact on me. So thank you for adding that in.
I can remember the day when Mrs. Flintstone would ride the dinosaur into the cave.
I remember two, Sheriff Robertson.
I didn't think the Mr. Broke, he graduated.
I did.
Of course, Bill had the George Washington's on him.
Bill only had to get through eight grades before he graduated.
Did he graduate, did you say?
No. Okay. Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Over the course of the past several months, we've talked on this podium about an epidemic that we've dealt with here in Allegheny County, which of course is the opioid and heroin problem in the county. Not just the county, but you know, the state and also the country itself. Last year, we did a town hall meeting and probably, probably reached out to about 2,000, I'd say 2,500 people within the county by trying to educate not just the kids, but trying to educate the parents and the teachers and the citizens of Allegheny County with this particular problem. Two individuals who were instrumental in this process were here tonight, and I would like to, of course, recognize them for their work. Rebecca Myers, who is the Program Director with O-Patient Addictions, and Chris Delaney, who is the Program Director, Prevention and Promotion with the Allegheny County Health Department. Both of these individuals were at, I believe, every, every talk that we gave, and they went all the way from Westerport to Frostburg to Cumberland to Flintstone, Old Town. We tried to cover as much of Allegheny County as we could, and there is plans and work to continue the effort. We'll be providing probably town hall meetings coming up. In fact, I just located another, another movie, which I haven't had a chance to explain or show the two ladies yet, that I think would be another good thing to bring out to the community. So we're going to try to do that. We're going to try to expand our, our talks to just, from just the high school kids. We're going to try to take that to our middle schools, actually even to maybe some of the elementary schools this year with some other videos, and we found which are suitable for different ages. So I feel that personally, the opioid and heroin problem, the way to address it right now is with education, to try to keep individuals from getting involved. So with that being said, I have two plaques. Come on up, ladies. You need a wall to put them on. Says the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office Certificate of Appreciation awarded to, and I have one for Christine Delaney and one for Rebecca Myers. They say, in recognition of your valued support in 2016 town hall meetings, of your dedicated service and efforts, where they most counted with the addiction problem in Allegheny County. And we had on here May of 2016. We were going to try to get these a little earlier. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, but I'd like to present Chris as yours. And Rebecca, I appreciate all you've done, and couldn't wait to thank you. Thanks.
Sheriff, glad to be here. This is the official citation. It says, whereas Rebecca A. Myers is the O-Patient Addictions Program Director and Christine Delaney is the Prevention and Promotion Program Director at the Allegheny County Health Department, and we, the Allegheny County Commissioners, wish to publicly recognize professional and personal contributions of Ms. Myers and Ms. Delaney to the sheriff's town hall meetings. And the sheriff's town hall meetings were organized to inform and educate citizens and stakeholders about non-medical use of opioids in our community. And whereas abuse of and addiction to opioids is an escalating consequence of abuse and addiction that are devastating, and now there's an opioid epidemic in many countries around the world, we therefore, the Allegheny County Commissioners, admire and appreciate the work of Ms. Myers and Ms. Delaney to the Public Health Services in Allegheny County. To that sign, Jake Shad, Cree Brody, Bill Valentine.
And I think we owe the sheriff just big round of applause. He was great all night.
We need some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And everyone, if you stand sideways, I can get more people in.
It's all right.
Yeah, I'm saying that it probably don't make much if we stand sideways or not, Bill.
It's the same distance.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Thanks, ladies. Appreciate it.
Could you say something, one lady?
You absolutely can. Thank you.
Just wanted to say a few words. Sheriff, we can't thank you enough for encouraging us to partner with you. It's been one heck of a great ride, and we're really excited about Phase Two. And can't say enough about the county's support as well. We so greatly appreciate it. The Health Department loves to partner with our local agencies, and it means so much to us. And again, too, if it weren't for our Deputy Health Officer, Papinowska, and our Health Officer, Joe, Janelle Mayer, we wouldn't be able to do these things. We have complete support of our Health Department, and that means a lot to us. Thank you very much.
And I just want to add a thank you to Bill Valentine. He came to most of our town hall meetings, so he was drunk all over the county as well. And that kind of support means something in community when you have the sheriff, you have the county commissioner, and the Health Department working together. It makes an impact in our community. And I do believe that even though we have an epidemic, we have a strong community, and we collect this thing by working together. And we are fortunate that in our county, we have good partnerships, and we have strong partnerships, and we have been working well together for years and years and years, and that's what makes a difference in a community like ours. And I just want to say thank you as well.
Thank you.
Something else I'm going to add to this, since we got Ms. Delaney, Ms. Myers, and the sheriff here. I was actually contacted by a citizen the other day who would like to get involved with this, which tells me that you have done a fantastic job on this outreach. Former Board of Education member Jeff Metz would like to get involved with trying to help to spread his word to the community, so I'll make sure that you guys get his contact information because...
He's contacted us.
Oh, fantastic. Fantastic. But I was thinking, it goes a long way to show how much your word has got out there, that you're starting to get citizens behind you, which white is most definitely need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All righty. Moving on to our action agenda. Item number three is our annual budget message, and you know, I think that we're pretty proud of this budget. Unlike other years, I think this year's been easier than most, and there's no tax increases, and we kept spending pretty, pretty level. So our fiscal year budget summarizes the goals of our Board of County Commissioners. Our Board believes this budget is equitable and realistic, given our county's projected revenues for fiscal year 2017. This budget was developed and presented to the general public for input, and our taxpayers deserve a balanced budget from their government, and this budget is balanced. This fiscal year 2017 budget continues to show our commitment to Allegheny County taxpayers. The increase in spending is limited to only 1.9%, and this year's budget offers another small decrease to a real property tax rate, which brings it to the lowest level since 1991. Last year, this board took action that would greatly expand the homes to a property tax credit, and this will go into effect July 1. The number of households eligible to claim this credit will more than double compared to last year, and Allegheny County will now have the most generous tax credit in all of Western Maryland, and it is the most generous in the state. Fiscal year 2017, the total general fund appropriations are $86,262,478. And education remains the county's single highest funding priority, with 46.3% of the general fund dedicated to Allegheny County Port of Ed and our community college, ACM. Allegheny County Government has increased funding of the Board of Education by $332,140 over last year, bringing the local contribution to $30,169,685. This is a record contribution and does not include the additional $4 million needed to make Allegheny High a reality. Also, as of today, the county is providing $13.7 million in funding for the new Allegheny High School. To assist the Board of Education's effort to obtain the most favorable state funding commitment, the county repaid $1,079,342 to the state as part of the county's commitments to this project. And the county will also be providing in-kind contributions, including services of construction inspector and the constructions of our athletic fields, which will be done in-house by our Department of Public Works. Public Safety receives 20.5% of every tax dollar. Public Safety includes Allegheny County Department of Emergency Services, Sheriff's Office and Road Patrol, Detention Center, and our volunteer EMS companies. We also voted to contribute additional funds to bring Allegheny County Sheriff's deputies into the law enforcement officers' pension system, or LEOPS, and our police will now receive the same retirement benefits that other officers across the state deserve. The budget includes $792,500 for PEGO projects, which will be used for capital projects for the Port of Ed, library, detention center, county office complex, and roads, without incurring any new debt. The budget only utilizes $150,000 previously assigned fund balance for new voting machines required but not funded by the state. The county's fund balance is maintained at a level slightly exceeding that prescribed by the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54. The budget provides a 1% increase to Allegheny College of Maryland, Allegheny County Library System, HRDC, and the Family Crisis Resource Center, which have been steadfast partners during our challenging fiscal times in the past few years. The Local Impact Grant provided to the Allegheny County from Rocky Cap Casino Funds continues to be a bright spot. In addition to the $560,000 reserved for opportunity scholarships, 10% of the funds are reserved for PEGO for the county and 10% for the Board of Education. Another $15,000 will be set aside for the Western Maryland Food Bank, and it's estimated the local fire and EMS companies will share over $700,000 from this source of revenue. A highlight in this budget is our income tax receipts, which increased 9% over last year, and this is the biggest one-year increase in recent history. It underscores the fact that every job, no matter what the pay, adds increased revenues. And while there's still much work to do, this increase shows that there's positive economic momentum in Allegheny County. Our Board has achieved our self-initiated goal of $3 million as the county's maximum annual debt service commitment. Given the loss of highway user funds and the state shifting additional liabilities to local governments, Allegheny County had no choice but to reduce its annual commitment to debt service, which previously stood at $5 million annually just five years ago. All departments aggressively and consistently pursue and secure federal, state, and private grants, which help offset costs to taxpayers. Furthermore, all management team members and department heads operate well within their authorized budgets. We're proud of the budget we've crafted and will continue the hard work to be good stewards of our tax dollars. And the entire budget is available on the website. This is signed with Board of County Commissioners, Bill Valentine, Cree Brody, and Jake Shad. Thank you. And with that, we'll go into the budget itself.
Evening, Commissioners.
Sheriff, how are you?
Good. How are you? Well, as Commissioner Shad just said, you know, we've been working on the budget since January. Tonight would be the night we formalize the budget and go ahead and adopt our operating capital budgets, and there's a number of steps we'll have to go through to do that tonight. Largely a formality at this point, but a necessary one, so if you don't mind, we'll just kind of step right through everything real quick. The first motion we have is to enact Resolution 16-15, which will actually adopt the fiscal year 17 operating a capital budget. It's in the grand total amount of $135,663,070. So that includes, as Commissioner Shad mentioned, an $86 million general fund. It includes a 2% cost of living adjustment for county employees. It's a total increase of 1.99% over last year. Let's see anything else here. Tenth of a penny reduction in our property tax rate, and the homestead tax credit moving to 4%. So all in all, a nice budget, as Commissioner Shad mentioned. A little easier than past years, still not great, but definitely a little easier, a little better. So first step tonight would be for you three to approve Resolution 16-15.
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
All righty. Item number five, our tax levy and differential.
So that was step one. Step two would be to actually adopt the tax levy and tax differential rates for the year. And as we discussed during our constant yield hearing back in March, and we've discussed many times since, we reduced the tax rate by a tenth of a penny to 29770, six consecutive year of tax decreases. No one else can say that in the state, so something to hang your hat on. So what we need to do with this motion is adopt those tax rates so we can apply them to tax bills effective July 1. So I'll go for your approval on tax rates.
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
And number six, our supplemental levy.
And this would be our supplemental levy for special taxing areas and add-on rates. They were very largely unchanged from prior years, and your approval of these will allow us to also apply these to the tax bills effective July 1. So I'm looking for your approval of these.
Is there a motion?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
And last but not least, item number seven.
This one's probably the easiest, I'll just a motion to authorize our department to publish the necessary levy documents in the paper, and as Commissioner Shad mentioned, this will be on our website. Probably in about a week, we'll finalize everything after tonight and should have the documents out, so this will allow us to publish everything.
Make a motion and accept by item number seven.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for a good budget process.
And it's a lot longer than the five minutes you stand up there.
It gives them a little...
That's right.
So I did. Glad to be here tonight.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Item number eight is our water and sewer rates for 2017. Mr. Yeder.
Hello, Commissioners. On May the 4th, the Sanitary Commission met and recommend, approved the recommendations to the county commissioners for water and sewer rates. They were presented to the county commissioners on May the 5th and have been posted on the website since then. The increase was what we consider to be a bare minimum of $2 per quarter sewer and a $1 to $2 per quarter on water. To my knowledge, we haven't received any comments about what was posted on the website. Just looking for your official approval on those rates tonight.
Mark, when the Sanitary Commission recommends that they have representatives from each area that we have customers, am I correct?
Yes, that's how we try to pick them to cover the entire county.
Last year when we did this, you know, the next day, everyone asked why we set and raised the rates, and we only adopted the rates that they gave us by their representatives. So I just want to be clear on that, so...
That is a motion.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Item number nine is our Evens Creek Stream Restoration. Mr. Patterson.
Dan, for Dan.
Dan, yes.
Same here.
It aged a few years, maybe.
Don't make fun of Dan.
Something to water down here.
Gentlemen, tonight, this is a result of Dan and Angie's great relationship with Maryland U.R. They reached out to Dan, and he came to me on a Friday afternoon and said, "I just got a call from U.R. They have some unexpended money from fiscal year 16 that they'd like to throw our way towards a project that we have been working on for a couple of years, trying to get some great money." So tonight here, this is twofold. We'll be able to restore a section of stream on Evens Creek and also realign a sewer that's been compromised by this stream. So ask them for your permission to sign into contract with U.R. and to accept the funding and the conditions, and also authorize us to move forward toward advertising the project for bits.
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
I don't know the deal. That's a common switch. It's just conditions. I wonder what they are, but all three of us have to resign.
Just one.
Thank you.
I think one has to resign. That's all you got. Moving into our consent agenda. Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, if you will indulge me, and it's that time of year again, and our consent is... This time of year, it will be a little harder. So tonight, we have 10 items on the agenda for consideration. Item number 10 is a motion to request authorization to advertise the North Branch Road Rehab Project. This is a project, Commissioners, which the county was successful in receiving ARC funds from just last year to the tune of about $700,000 to support this important project. Item number 11 is a motion to award a contract to Park Lane Construction and Development to build a new salt dome in the amount of $293,404. Commissioners, as you're aware, the county demolished our old facility last year. After 25 years of service with the county, the building was used when we got it from State Highway Administration. So I want to thank Paul and Adam for getting creative and using our Coal Hall Road Tax Funds and our PEGO funds to finish this project. Item 12 is a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to award the South Cumberland Library renovation project to Harbelt Incorporated in the amount of $1,459,000. Commissioners, the county show this project is approximately $85,000, and these funds will come from our PEGO fund. Item 13 is a motion to authorize staff to begin the design and general project administration for the water station run sewer rehab project. This is an important project, which we are doing in partnership with the Maryland Department of the Department and the Allegheny County Health Department. Item 14 is a motion to approve Resolution 1616 to authorize a $100,000 loan with USDA to support the Route 36 water line project. Item 15 is a motion to approve Resolution 1617 to authorize the standard pickup provision of employee contributions as part of the county's enrollment into the state's LEOPS program. We're hoping, Commissioners, that this is the last little nuance that we will have to step through to perfect our enrollment of our Public Safety employees into LEOPS. Item 16 is a motion to declare surplus real property located on Mayan First Avenue and to authorize its sale. Item 17 is a motion to authorize the administrator to execute the annual senior care plan submitted by Allegheny County Health Department to the Maryland Office on Aging. Item 18 is a motion to approve the purchase of a one-ton truck from Hurtsford on state bid. We will be securing this vehicle, Commissioners, as part of some grant funds associated with the Rollins Water Project. And item number 19 is a motion to authorize $1,000 from the county's community promotions account to support the Old Town Summer Festival scheduled for later this month.
Is there any discussion?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
I think it was terrible. Mr. Brunt.
Just briefly, Commissioners, if you will indulge me, our deadline for programming
Our deadline for program open space submittals by all our partnering agencies throughout the county is May the 1st and we have received a list of 13 projects from eight organizations. And at this time, I'd like to just give this summary document to you for your consideration and your guidance in terms of how you'd like for us to move forward with this. The long and short of it, Commissioners, is that of the 13 projects, they total $429,701 program requests, unfortunately, we only have $175,899 to play with. Nothing to deal with the other side. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine.
Just a few things real quick. At our last meeting, Commissioner Brody brought up a project that he felt Tri-County Council killed last year.
Well, it was...
The doctor's unit, ARC. And what has happened, ARC has changed their guidelines for things that they'll fund and it's seen as an access road. Now to get funding for an access road, you need to have a written program explaining exactly how many jobs it's going to create and all. That's a federal program we've got very little to say about. Secondly, I'd like to personally thank Paul Kale and his team. I think it was a great meeting up in Westernport yesterday. That's a project that's moving forward. Looks like that water line extension through three different phases will go all the way to Bloomington and Garrett County. It's greatly needed up in that area and it'll actually be a good financial boost for the town of Westernport. So it's a win-win all the way around.
Very good. Well, I'm going to keep it short. Thanks, Jason. Budget season's done for another seven months, six months. And I really don't know how to show appreciation of the Board on how much we do appreciate the hard work that is in this because it's not easy and we know that. But since we've got a lot of department heads here, thanks to every one of yous for staying in budget because that makes our life a lot better. With that, the only other little thing is, I don't know if I told you this last meeting, we did have a little meeting up in Leveil with the project is going to go forward. Thanks a lot to the, thanks a lot to Administrator Everly. I have to give Dave credit. He sits here a lot and I'll give him credit for a lot of stuff he does, but he picked that ball up and running. The governor had his troops out in force with that project and two projects are gone now. That's it for me this evening, sir.
All right. I've spoken enough tonight, but, you know, maybe next year we'll get some local highway user funds like we were expecting and then that budget will even be easier. Before I forget, because this is at the bottom, federal government's revising their floodplain maps. There's an open house scheduled for Tuesday, June 7th at the Malapur purpose building from 5:00 to 7:00 at night. There will be a question and answer session at 6:00. MDE will be there too. So Creed, maybe you would like to hang out with them. And then there's one on Wednesday, the 8th from 1:00 to 4:00 and that's at the Churkis Creek Library in Lenox County. So that's Tuesday, June 7th and Wednesday, June 8th.
And a really interesting thing about these floodplain maps are supposedly creating using nothing but scientific data and yet there's areas that they say were flooded within the last 100 years that now they're saying they haven't been flooded in the past 500 years. So it makes me wonder about their scientific data.
Yeah, I don't even have time. I had enough of that fight two weeks ago.
All righty. Our constituent comments tonight, we have Kenneth Willmont signed up.
I'm Kenneth Willmont, the 5:30, 4:30 coming up. I'm here just to bring to your attention an incident that I observed and participated in on Old Town Library at the Circle Cave gas station. I pulled in there Monday afternoon to get gas. I had to circle around the tank to get on the other side of the truck. I got out and I was running my credit card. I heard a lot of jabbering. I thought, what's going on? So I walked around the other side, looked in this, I'm not going to tell you what car or what the car was. I looked in this car and here's a little two-year-old boy strapped in a car seat. So I said, "Wow." So I said hi to him. He's waving, he's jabbering, right? He's pointing into the, you know, the service station everywhere that people went to get their snacks and, right? Anyway, so I stood there a good five minutes and finally the mother came out and I told her, I said, "Lady," I said, "I've been watching your car here so nobody would run off with your child." Well, she wasn't thankful. I'm not going to tell you whatever, all she said, but I'm in the hang, but you know what. In other words, she told me to mind my you-know-what business and all this other good stuff. And I said, "Well, if that's where you're feeling about it," I said, "I should have called the police." So she said, "Call you-know-what police." So she let, I called the police. I don't know what came of it, but I just want you to know that I know there's laws against leaving kids in the car, but I think they're only enforced when something happens. I think something should be done when people find a child in their car and they bring it to the tent. I don't know what you people can do about it, but see, we do have people, it's unbelievable. I wouldn't leave, I've got 12 great grandchildren and I can guarantee my grandchildren, they better not leave anybody in the car by themselves. And I think it's terrible that we've got people around here that just don't care about the children. She said, "Oh, I was watching." I said, "Lady, I could have run off with that child you've never seen." But I think maybe a start would be, I think everybody should have to have a sign on the door, "Do not leave children in the car." And then maybe a little thing here, charges free. I don't know, but I think the only thing gets people's attention today is you hit them in the pocket. You don't do any good to put them in jail. They got to pay you out of fine or something like that. Anyway, thanks for listening. I just wanted you to know, but this is a matter of record because I called the police and I don't know what came of it, but I don't think she's happy if they did go see you. Thank you.
With that, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, June 30th at 5:00. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.